Call the meeting order, roll call please.
Mayor Staley.
Present.
Mr. Burnham.
Present.
Mr. DeLeo.
Here.
Mr. DePortier.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
The Amblin.
Here.
Notice that this meeting was provided to the Burnersville News, Courier-News, and the Star-Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk, and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December 29, 2015. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, open session. At this point in the meeting, the mayor and council welcome comments from any member of the public to help facilitate an orderly meeting, and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers shall limit their comments to five minutes. If reading from the prepared statement, please provide a copy, an email copy, to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. What was that, the ARC?
Good evening.
Good evening. What's come up? Yeah, come on up.
I didn't know this was like Shark Tank.
Say your name.
You don't have a microphone right here, straight up. Right by the microphone, yep.
We have a sample zone.
This is broadcast to three different countries.
Right.
It's on YouTube.
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for allowing us a few moments to speak. My name is Lauren Frary, and I'm the Executive Director at the ARC of Somerset County, and I want to tell you a little bit about the ARC, and then I'd like to invite Lisa Marie up, she's our Director of our foundation, to tell you about a few very exciting events that we have coming up in the future. The ARC of Somerset County has been in the county since 1972, we're one of the largest providers of disability services in the county, and we provide services to children, adults, literally from birth through the end of life. A lot of people relate the ARC to our group homes that we provide in the community, but we're so much more. We have services, therapeutic services for children, we have a daycare and a childcare center, we have employment services, and we have parenting programs. But one of our favorite programs is Camp T'Tony, a 17-acre camp located in Warren, New Jersey, that provides over 250 families every summer with the ability to get just a break, some respite, from their often 24-hour caregiving needs for their child with a disability. And oftentimes, when we talk about camp, it's sometimes more important for the services that we provide to parents than at the actual child, because literally, for many families in Somerset County, it's the only service that they receive for the entire year. So we've got a couple of events coming up, and I'd like to invite Lisa Marie up to talk a little bit about those events as well.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Marie Arreno, I'm the Director of the Foundation for the ARC, and my office is located right down the road on Fort Hills on 202. What we put together, we have several different ways of how we help support the ARC agency, and that's through, one of them is coming up in June, it's a 5K race and a walk located in Duke Island Park, and we typically have lots of corporate and community and civic support, and this year we happen to have a really big turnout, and we hope to get some more people from the northern county. This particular event draws a lot from the southern county, so that's why we're here to announce it. It's Saturday, June 4th, and it's from 7:30 to 11:00 in the morning. In addition to that, we do support for Camp T'Tony, as she mentioned, as Lauren mentioned, Camp T'Tony located in Warren Township, right now is undergoing a capital campaign to renovate the 17 acres to become more accessible for the need and the growth of the population that we're serving. And we're happy to, you know, take any questions about that on the side, or you can give me a call. You're also welcome to come to my office and review the renovation plans, the architectural drawings, and the six-year plan to reach that goal. So if you have any questions, I do encourage you to, we left a bunch of information about the agency, about some of our fundraising events, but I do, I welcome people to come in, I'm right down the street, I'm there five days a week, just give me a call, and I'd be happy to talk to you all about what we do.
Can we communicate to the, to the school to have volunteers and everything else, because I'm sure they can get their community service points and stuff that are required by the school?
Definitely, that'll be a great idea. Would you like to do that, or want to do it through the council, or?
I'd like to do it through themselves.
Okay.
No, I'd like to do it through the council and everything else, because, you know, I'd like to be champions of this whole thing, pushing this along.
This sounds great, yeah, and you were, I thank you for bringing this forward, because you were champion of this project in the borough, so.
Thank you. What was the date of the, the run again?
It's Saturday, June 4th in the morning, and we actually are in need of a lot of volunteers. We have volunteers from the operations side that are in need, we've been reaching out to some high schools, I think one high school in particular got back to us, but not Burnersville. So students, we, anybody who's interested in running themselves to show support for the agency, and we also need some help with, you know, our buddy, they're called buddy walkers, for our folks who come, just to kind of stay by their side and keep them company, that really helps. So we're looking to draw at least 30 to 50 volunteers if possible, and it'll all end in a culmination of a free picnic from the Masons, so.
Good, and we have a very active Poana's Key Club in our school, there are quite a few students that are members of.
Key Club?
Yeah.
Although it may be beyond the date of home service has to be finished by.
Mm-hmm, but, for next year, the juniors from sophomore, yes.
Have you spoken with the Somerset County Business Partnership?
They allow us to post on their site the event, but that's pretty much it. We are members, and we post, and we let them know, but they also work with some of the other nonprofits and other charities that I never really upfronted them first. We'd like to be, but they're.
We'll nudge them a little bit, so.
We appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Is there any way we can make donations to like their camp and save like, like mulch or, you know, some of the services, they have some issues with sewer line?
Jack, were you able to do that, these are loaning equipment, utilize equipment and mulch?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
So what you should also note just a quick is, we always, we're always recruiting for volunteers for all of our group home, community projects, as well as the camp, pretty much we have community and corporate volunteers that descend upon our properties, and they help us do renovations to our homes and to our properties that don't come in through our funding. So the work is man-hours plus it's usually supplies that are donated, so that's very much welcome.
Can we talk to the county about that also?
We sure can, yes. Yes, I look forward to working with you.
Me too, thank you.
Like anything else?
No, I have, I think that's it.
Anyone else have anything else?
Thank you for the invite.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else looking to be heard during the open session? Christine?
Is this on the board?
Budget?
Is this open session or is it just open session?
Open session, if you want to speak, you can speak, yes.
I'm Christine Zamara, 28 Anderson Hill, and this is kind of relevant, because one of the things I asked Sandy about this week was getting the 5K for the church in town and the Gail Blake 5K on the town calendar, because when you go to the Borough website, it says community calendar.
Not anymore.
Well, it still says it after you click municipal calendar, then it says community calendar. So, in any case, I just thought that if it's a family-friendly event like that, 5K, or any 5K that, you know, you just want to get the word out about, it would be helpful if people had one central location to find that stuff, so. It's just a suggestion, and then I also sent you Madison has like, if you really want to keep the Borough meeting separate, then just have a Borough and Community where people could toggle back and forth. So that was the only item I have.
Or again, perhaps links to, you know, organizations or something like that.
Well, not necessarily, I mean, I guess I get the idea that you don't want to be promoting outside organizations, but if it's an event, and it's a community event, I just think, to me, it's kind of a good idea, so.
Okay, and just for, historically, when the website first came about, we wanted to keep it Borough business, you're right, Sandy?
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
And the problem really is if you open it up, you sort of, where do you draw the line?
That's where the challenge comes, Chris, although we have many good events.
I get it, I mean.
Every little organization that isn't large enough to have its own website or other outlets, you know.
I just think it would be supporting.
But we couldn't do it for just the town?
We might be able to do, you know.
We could do it just for the town.
Yes. But we need to figure out some kind of a work.
We'd have to, we'll have to work on that and review it.
If you want to do something separate but attached, you probably have to authorize the expenditure, because I think it would say it is unchanged to the rest, but they might charge up extra parts.
What's the order of magnitude on something like that roughly?
Uh, well, I don't know.
Hundred dollars, two hundred dollars.
I don't know.
Probably have to ask.
At least, yeah.
Because we don't maintain our own site, which is a subject that we really like to talk about some, like, everything that's, as I understand, everything that goes on the site, the outside organization does, and we have to pay them for everything that goes through that site, because we can't maintain ourselves.
Back, back, back.
So, and I talked to Chris about it, and, you know, there's, the site will be running places online, because, you know, the more you use it, and the more people use it, which is the idea, the more it's just going to keep, you know, running up. So I don't know the exact answer, but I'm sure we can find out.
Yeah, if we could get that information, maybe we could talk about it a little bit more in depth in the next meeting.
Yeah.
All right, thanks Christine, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to be heard?
Any gentleman in front want to be heard?
Paul, do you have anything to say?
No.
We don't have a second open session during this meeting, so you might as well, yeah, come on.
We have a public hearing on the budget, and you're all budget? Yeah.
Okay, we're going to have a public hearing on that this evening, thank you. All right, seeing no one else, I'm going to close the open session, I'll let them move the ordinances. Item 10, motion to move that ordinance 16-1713, the ordinance concerning special event banners and temporary signs in the right of way, and amending Chapter 4 of the Borough Code entitled General Licensing, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and at a public hearing, be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 PM on April 25, 2016. Move. Move by Councilman Schmidt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Youngblood. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained?
None, the ayes have it.
Sandy, just question on that, we're basically just changing the, from clerk to zoning officer, is the, are, those are the only changes?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, item 6B resolutions. Anybody wishing to discuss any of resolutions 16-81 to 16-86? Any questions or?
Like the 84 office?
1684?
Sit outside.
Okay.
Cool.
Anyone else? All right, now, it's a thing of motion to move 1681 through 1683, 1685 through 1686, move by Councilman DePorter, do I have a second?
One second.
Second by Councilman Wade, roll call please.
Mr. Burnham.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeo.
Yes.
Mr. DePorter.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Youngblood.
Okay, Peter?
I just wanted to check, a couple of questions to make sure, does this cover all of the costs? I see it has hoops, the basketball hoops, asphalt surfacing, striping, just the pads for bleachers, are there included bleachers or anything else that might be needed up there?
It doesn't include the bleachers, includes the pad that the, that the bleachers are going to sit on, but we thought that later on, we would be able to get money from some of the saved projects from the road paving, in order to buy a three or four-row, 25 to 30-seat bleacher set, and we might be able to put one on the other end if we don't have to cut into the hill too much.
Okay, thank you.
And just also some other little extras we have to add, and that's scoreboard, 30-second clock, that kind of stuff when you run the scores table.
It's not on here.
It's not on here, it's just minor.
A shot, a shot clock?
Shot clock.
Yeah.
And a scoreboard.
Okay.
A scores table and probably two benches, one on each side, but those are minor things.
And the, the striping is just for basketball?
Just for basketball.
So there's no other striping for any other activities that might be used on that surface anywhere?
No, we, we, we should only use that for basketball, dedicate it to basketball. I mean, it can be used. It could be used. By whoever would like, but in terms of how the court is actually going to be painted, or the surface is going to be put down.
Yeah, it's not even painted, it's part of the actual.
Yeah, it's part of, it's like the tennis court.
But there's, there's an area, and if this is the whole section, and there's an area right in the very center.
Yeah.
That's going to be wide enough for volleyball.
Right.
Or some, I think there's also some kind of roller blade, or hockey, something like that.
Right, lacrosse practice.
Lacrosse practice, right, right.
Right.
But it won't be striped as such.
No, that'll just be open.
So you don't want to mark it or anything.
No.
No, they were just going to say temporary cones or removable goalposts could be put in those areas.
Anything else?
That's it.
Can't, anybody else? No. All right, I'm saying a motion to move 1684.
I'll move.
Move by Mr. DeLeo.
Second.
Second by Councilman Schmidt, roll call please.
Mr. Youngblood.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. DePorter.
Yes.
Mr. Burnham.
Yes.
Item 6C, 2016 budget, going to open a public hearing on this proposed budget. Anybody from public wishing to be heard on the budget, Paul?
First and foremost, I would like to thank you, the county and the ladies for your service to the community, and I look at the budget, and I think it's a good job, did the best you could under a lot of competing influences, and I certainly appreciate it as a citizen and a very person. Just a couple of questions, I'm not going to labor, you know, pencils and nickels and dimes, I have a couple of policy questions, but I'd like to know how the construction fees, from what source they came, because the ratable increase from that construction, and I'm not sure if it was timing issue, appears to be very small, about 39,000, as I, I was going blurry, I was looking at the computer, so if I, if I mis, misstate a number, please, I apologize. But it doesn't seem to be a big number, which means that we're virtually in a no-growth scenario. It doesn't appear to be, and then I hear, and I'm not sure where I heard this from, that the tax allocation is being shifted from the more expensive homes to other parts of the community. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, I don't know where I heard it, which is another issue, which is trouble. The fact that there's no growth means that every spending expenditure is, in fact, a burden for somebody, and God knows, there are people in presidential election that talk about government. So I just wanted to, so does anyone know where the construction fees, if they're one-shot deals?
Wait, you're talking about constructing the fees, or are you talking about the value of the, of the fees?
The fees, the permanent fees, are they residential fees, are they?
Yeah.
One-shot deals, are they commercial, that it's no longer?
Fees typically are for construction, a one-shot.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know, but you anticipate, you visit, are they from residential construction?
Probably, because they don't have much commercial.
So all the banks are done, and all adds done, so?
Well, TD is still involved.
So there are renovations and?
Reinforcements.
And, and you anticipate that that 300,000 is going to come in next year?
We've had a short history of that.
Yeah. Is milling and paving a bondable expenditure?
Yeah, sure is, yes.
It is, because I noticed in the capital budget that it's a cash payment.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, I mean, as a public policy point of view, I don't know what the useful life of milling and paving is, is it 20 years?
No, I believe it's eight to 10.
Eight to 10, no, that's pretty short for selling bonds. But clearly, that improvement benefits people that will live here five years from today and 10 years from today.
Yes.
So is it from a public policy point of view, to pay cash for things, I mean, of course, equipment has the same impact, so I just backed into myself, but, but, I think, I think what I'm saying is that you should look at these cash payments from a public policy point of view and see the populace that has benefited, it could be people that live here 10 years from today, or 15, or whatever, so clearly, those people should also be a share of some of the burden, rather than taxing the people that live here now completely for that expenditure.
Well, we're, yeah, typically speaking, what happens, and let's all use this scenario to make the math very easy, if, if, let's say we have a million dollars to spend on the roads, so, and we think we're going to do five roads, and we're all going to come in at 200,000, that will eat up the million, but the bids come back, and we've, look, this one's 150, and we've actually saved, instead of a million, we're only spending 900. That 100,000 delta, we put towards mill and pave, so it's not necessarily a cash payment that we are finding cash from somewhere else, it's saved off of something we've already budgeted.
So you cancel the unexpended portion of the budget, put it into surplus, and then reappropriate.
It's reappropriated. All right, Ralph, am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, I, I've done that myself.
Okay.
But we also made, took out a rather large bond a year ago, so a lot of the road work that's being done right now is actually.
Yes, yes, of course.
So for this year's budget, there's only two mill and paves in the town, the rest, all the work being done now is from the bonded money.
Okay, but what I see in the capital budget is cap payments, now, what you're telling me, you should derive that from unexpended balances of ordinance, and you reappropriate it to surplus, and then that to trace the expense.
That's one way, I mean, that's depending on the situation on the road, the size of the road, that's.
Oh, okay, I understand, I understand.
In principle, I think we agree with the, you know, if it's a long-term capital investment, it's appropriate to do long-term.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying, I'm not disputing the individual project, but I think from looking at the budget, I look to, now, I don't understand why there's a cap increase, because the major expenditures that I see is excluded from the cap, so I don't know where the cap increase comes from, but only why it would need one.
The, what has been followed over the years, Paul, was to pass that ordinance for an increased cap, to get a cap base and a cap banking from year to year, in, in, in.
I got you.
Your plan, and you hear there, there's a need in the top.
I got you, I just, I hear you, I understand, you know, you're going to do the best you can, I got you.
You know, for example, the ones that we're always worried about are the pension and healthcare plans and pensions.
Clearly, clearly a concern, I applaud that. But you have a cap bank from 2015 and 14, plus new ratables of 500,000, now you're asking for an additional 150,000, for, I'm not my ethic, it could be wrong, I'm getting old, what are you, I'm not a spring chicken, so, so I see, so that gives me a total of a cap bank surplus of over 600,000.
Yeah, but from year to year, that, we've not, you know, we've not had more, I think, than 300,000 moving forward from year to year, and again, it's, it's in preparation for something, we've been having some unanticipated expenditures over the year.
Okay, no, I got you, so, so that brings me to my last point, and I, well, I got two, I got two of them, but this is the last one on the question. Since this is a one-shot deal, your, your debt service increase, which I understand is going to drop off, the principal payment, which is going to drop off in the succeeding budget, and you're, you generated a surplus of 150,000 over operating revenue, that perhaps, because of the one-shot, and as a matter of budget policy, perhaps you could have a one-shot increase in revenue to offset that one-shot increase in taxation. So, so my, my point is that we can't be so conservative that, and I don't mind that, I appreciate, but we can't be so conservative that we step on the necks of the taxpayer. You know, we've got a balance, you've got a revenue side of 150,000, and, and, you know, that 150, I don't know where the tax point is these days, but, you know, I think a little more juggling could reduce the taxing path, that, that's what I'm saying. And the other, the last point is, the open space fund, I think, has a balance of like 5 mil, that is an awful big number. Now, either it should be expended or returned back to the taxpayer in some kind of implements, because I, I don't think you guys want to be a bank, but, you know, there's so many banks out there now, I think you probably lose them. So, so my point there is something has got to be done, either expended, or we got to give it back.
That's a good point, and the open space committee has been very active in looking at parcels and.
Yeah, and I don't, yeah, I don't think we ought to spend money just to spend it, I mean, value and project and social value, I don't know what those words mean, but, but, I think we ought to, I think we ought to take a look at that, and again, I, you guys feel that a lot of, a lot of, I certainly appreciate that, and I thank you all for your effort.
And we appreciate your.
Well, thank you very much, and thanks for your input, thank you. Anyone else looking to be heard on the budget? Seeing none? Paul, Ralph, you want to say anything? Peter? In public?
Yeah, I think it's a very good job, same way, because we do try to be conservative, historically, from, we run a pretty narrow surplus, and the surplus is really to benefit all taxpayers, so that we don't have dramatic fluctuations in the tax rates. We're just getting to the point where we have a reserve that's fairly useful for driving things, because things are so vastly expensive these days.
Like salt.
Like salt, or, you know, roads that came in, or some of these severe storms that come through and make a mess of things, to have that cash on hand for those kinds of emergencies, it's very, very valuable, because if you have to start funding short-term, that who knows what kind of rates, it's, could really raise havoc with the tax rate, and certainly the budget. I've seen situations where people ran a very fine line, and, you know, one year they had no tax increase, or even a slight decrease, and then the next year they had a 14 or 15% increase, and that's certainly not a good way to treat residents, it's certainly not good for property values, if you have to expense a crazy swing, so we're trying to be diligent, conservative, but not too much. In terms of the overall rate this year, the actual, additional funding we raised are roughly 1.95, 9.6%, which is low historically, and certainly well within what we've done many years, and the difference, really about 1.1% increase, is with the long-term debt service, which is paying for the nature capital program that we have going with the roads, which includes, you know, some very long-lasting things like drainage and things of that So, I mean, Ralph and his team really squeezed a lot out of the program this year, and then when you think of the debt service swing was basically 36% increase, but we're able to keep things nice and, as they are, things like pension plans, you know, 5.9%, 15.3%. You know, you got a bunch of things that really are very hard to do, and that's why having a little bit of a pitch is beneficial. And we really didn't cut anything in terms of services, we've also increased the two pickups, not pickups, but two dropped, anything household waste that you want, we had two sessions this year, it was popular last year, it went very well, we're looking at a cost of. We're looking at a cost of probably twelve, fifteen thousand dollars a year instead of a curbside, which would be somewhere between one hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars. Curbside's great, but, you know, we have ways for people to rid of things that they need, and I think it's really important that we keep on doing those kinds of services. And that's it for the highlights. And Ralph, you're, you're all over the same place.
If there's any questions, any particulars? I guess I'd just like to make a point on one of the issues that Peter raised, that the last time, we have a surplus remaining, a balance remaining after taking one point five nine five million dollars to balance the budget. We have a surplus remaining of about five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. We have not, the borough has not seen a surplus remaining in that column since two thousand and two. That high, last year's was four hundred and thirty thousand, the preceding year was three seventy-six, and we're up to five fifty-five. So we are conservative, and that's a, that's a very true statement, and we try and squeeze as much as we can with what we have and build up reserves for that maybe day that we see what we have every other year.
So you're saying our Moody's and our S and P were well awarded to us? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we're consistent. We are, we are, we are consistent in a lot of things, and, you know, we try and move forward, try and keep pace. It's a, it's a challenge, but...
The, the bond funding that saved us, oh, seven hundred thousand dollars over the life of the bond.
What, what, the rating?
The, the rating helped to increase that, absolutely. But just doing what we did at that point in time and locking in debt services. One of the other points, I didn't get a chance to say, that was here, was that the finance committee's direction at this point in time, since we went out with such a large amount of money to borrow, was to keep the capital improvement program on a cash basis, and try to keep it on a cash basis as long as we can and not increase the debt. As we all know, I think from our private lives, you know, just the mortgage, general debts, not a good thing to carry, so we are, we're trying to get a handle on that, yet still proceed forward with the capital projects and the operational needs of our budget. So we've got one year, we tried with, you know, these large ticket items, you know, down the road are gonna probably cause another bond anticipation sale, but each year that goes by that we don't do that, we save on debt service. And so it will go down for the next years. We've got three hundred thousand dollars this year that will level out for the next sixteen years moving forward. So we want, you know, add to that, you know, we've got a long range, good program, and continue to put money into our funds, our dedicated funds for Snow the Winkle and for the compensation packages that are offered to people over twenty years. That should be fully funded in the next couple of years. That's, it's like a seven hundred thousand dollar liability we have out there, but we've got about half, more than half of it funded already. And the Snow the Winkle trust fund is just another rainy day account, and we get a lot of snow, and we don't have to, we go beyond our operating budget, and we've got this in reserves too. So, all of those things combined, I guess we make a conservative package to help balance between that and raising taxation, that I think, basically, all your help, I think that's the will of the governing body here, the philosophy, this direction I'm giving, so that's what we're trying to do.
We are looking to build some more long-term capital equipment funding, but keep the rigs down as we did and sort of do that trade-off in that balance we didn't, you know, start making critically new this year, but we're always looking at fire trucks and so that we have some funding. Learned in the past that when you buy something like that and have half the money put away in your ten-year period of time, it's nice, it makes it a lot easier for, again, keeping maintenance levels, but, we want to do so much and keep the balance in place because that's our thing to do.
Anyone else? Anyone else from the public before I close the open session? Well, Ralph, Finance Committee councilmembers, I want to thank you for your help on the budget, and our municipal managers, Police Department, Public Works, all of our departments for working throughout the year to keep your expenditures...
And the committee members, because we do have a lot of loan duties.
Yes, yeah. And so I want to thank everyone, and entertaining motion to move sixteen eighty-seven resolution adopting the two thousand and sixteen municipal budget.
Move?
Move by Councilman Bear Ground. Second by Councilwoman Wade. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bernbaum?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeo?
Yes.
Mr. DiCortare?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Yambun?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph.
Good job.
Thanks, Ralph. All right, six D, draft ordinance establishing parking restrictions at the former's market site. Has anybody been able to review that? Any suggestions?
I have a question. The ordinance states that from the first Saturday in June through the third Saturday in November, that there will not be any parking allowed. Do you mean for that full month, six-month period of time overnight, or just on Friday nights?
Friday, Saturday. Just on Friday, Saturday, you have to be out by Saturday morning.
Right, okay, but that's, I don't think that's what the ordinance says. It says that, the ordinance basically says for a six-month period of time, you're not gonna allow overnight parking, doesn't specify Friday night into Saturday morning. That may be the, right?
If ever said something...
I don't have a, I don't have a copy of that order from me.
Man, I can clarify that. I never intend to...
Right, I know what the intent was, but it simply said from...
I'm not intending.
I know, I see. Man, it's leaving, so...
Everybody up at PM, every Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, anyone else? Well, seeing none, Jack, you'll work that out?
Yes. We'll introduce it next meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Does it specify a particular section, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, it shows on the line. Designate on the next page.
On the map, right.
Everyone would...
And then it's gonna be marked.
Jack, do you want to just amend that, or do we have time?
Do you want to introduce it again? We'll just insert after five o'clock PM in the third line, September eight, every Saturday.
All right, so I'll introduce as amended.
No, it's, it's actually Saturday. It's three AM, Saturday morning to five PM, Saturday afternoon, which really doesn't have to be as late as five, because it's...
And we do have plenty of time if we want to...
Well, we could probably just leave a buffer in, obviously, market's out of there, we're not gonna force it.
Yeah, by the time they break down all their stuff, sometimes it's two o'clock, two thirty, so...
Yeah, probably you better have extended...
All right, you want to introduce this evening?
I'll introduce as amended.
All right, introduce as amended by Mr. Youngblood. Second, Mr. Leo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, the ayes have it. All right, six C, draft ordinance concerning inspections of owner-occupied multifamily dwellings. Everybody have a chance to review that?
The, 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 just one issue that still remains is to whether or not you want, I'm not sure if you want to make the decision, common areas in multifamily owner-occupied complexes to be inspected annually, as opposed to the individual properties?
Yes.
The opposite too, so...
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, the, the one issue is whether or not owner-occupied multifamily complexes, the common areas of those complexes should be inspected annually by a fire inspector, but not the individual housing units.
Right, and there, that's not something, are they charging an association?
Yeah, that would be charged to the association. Now, the other question asked to me by the fire inspector was whether he should do that with the housing inspector, and I responded, I thought it was more appropriate with the fire inspector.
Right, because if it's common, I mean, technically, there is no housing...
Exactly. All right, so I'll, I'll bring that in the next meeting for inspection, once this...
And he charges a hundred dollars for inspection, the cost is higher.
Right, but we actually discussed the fact that it really didn't cost, when the people from Maple Village were here, they were being charged a hundred, when the maybe more applicable price was twenty-five or fifty.
Right, and in fact, I think I pointed out, that may be inappropriate to the common areas, if not, if you do it again.
Yeah, right.
Okay, I'll bring that in the next meeting.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks.
All right, six F, request to park equipment on Route two oh two pavement project. Do you have a representative here from paving company?
Hello?
How you doing?
Thank you for having me here, Tony. We're building a pavement with Department of Transportation Route two oh two from, so I'm gonna introduce this one from May from Teleport David. We're working from Madison, from Spring Hill, Spring House Road, all the way to the town line on Madison-Bill Road.
Yes.
For Department of Transportation. And when over the parking situation, Chief Lieutenant, we're asking a request to park across the street from Town Hall, the Dirt Park Lot, and also on Mount Airy Road, the Park Lot over Mount Airy Road.
The Dirt Park Lot.
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Yes.
All the way in the back, like twelve stalls. But the construction is two phases. The first phase is the curb, contractor comes in, does all the handicap ramps, and I come in in the middle of May and six nights of paving, encompass your town and burnouts. That's it, we're out of here. But I need the permission to park from April eighteenth all the way to August thirty, just in case something happens. And that's what I'm requesting tonight.
Have we had any other requests for either one of those two areas?
In the past, or...
No, I mean, for, for this summer.
Between April eighteen...
I think we're coming for the council, no?
Yeah.
All the way to August, though, you're gonna be milling and paving six days?
No, 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 six nights, yeah, but I just need a...
But in May, you're gonna be doing it in May.
We're gonna do it in May, middle of May, six nights. I started with the striping, I started with the electrical work, so I need places to park for my subcontractors.
So you're gonna be minimizing the amount of spots you're gonna be taking at that point in time, because the big equipment will be gone.
Be gone.
And in May, roughly.
Weather, yeah, weather permitted, unless something changes, but I have a, my completion date is August thirtieth.
So you're gonna get this done before the Memorial Day Parade?
Well, I'm not sure.
When's the Memorial Day Parade?
I know, that's a dumb question, but, you know, I'm hoping to get it done. It all depends, the Department of Transportation, because we have an emergency contract with them. If they give us money to go to do Route four, I have to jump on Route four. That's where I'm in limbo right now, but right now, I'm expecting to be in your town second week of May for the building.
Okay.
Could you just notify us if something like that happens? Notify us if something, if you get moved up the... When, when would you know if Route four is gonna be going or not?
In a couple of weeks, a couple, a couple of weeks, end of May, end of April.
But you're starting this on the eighteenth of April?
My curb contractor.
Your curb contractor will be here next week.
Right. That's where I'm anticipating to have a curb crew come in, electric crew come in, do the prep work, and once they're done, then I come in doing my milling and paving. Right now, I'm milling and paving for the county, for Sunset County, and then once I'm done with the county, I'm coming here.
So you're gonna finish all the curb and everything else, and then you're gonna patch around everything else?
Right.
Just in case you do go to four?
Right.
And then this way, there won't be like ankle busters or anything else?
Correct.
They'll all be safe and everything else, and it'll be functional?
Right. You're gonna leave anything split, there's one, there's another, so...
So I guess my next question, in two weeks, is there a way that you can communicate to us and tell us when you're actually gonna...
Sure.
When you're gonna lock it in?
Yes, I can contact the chief.
Contact the chief, yeah, you're there.
That's fine.
In all fairness to him.
I'm saying contact the chief.
And chief, you're okay with this? I saw a correspondence...
No, I'm sorry, I mean, you just need to make sure that there's nothing else in the Emerald Lot when they get ready to move their equipment, so you'll have to coordinate with that, give us a few days heads up, so, you know, we can make sure that there's signs...
Equipment, not just vehicles?
Well, Lieutenant, I mean, in yourself, I did discuss what equipment you're going to be putting where, right? So maybe you can explain to council what you're envisioning putting where, especially in the Mount Airy Lot, if you're supposed to put it.
Across the street from the town facility, that'll be my staging area for traffic devices. Then I also will be parked in my milling machine, rollers, loaders, all the heavy...
Heavy stuff.
Right, that's where we start, right there. The other lot of Mount Airy, that'll be my staging area as I work northward. When I get down to Mount Airy Road at the end of night, I couldn't be parked there during the day, it'll be the milling machines, loaders, rollers, and no, no personal vehicles. That's where, then, then when my crew comes in at night, then equipment comes out of there, and we continue up the road.
So you will be, when you're working through the night, when do you end? Six AM?
Well, we have to be off the road by six o'clock in the morning, but we're done by five.
By five. So your stuff would be back in there...
During the day.
Right, but it, it's the in and out, so you would be there somewhere between five AM and six AM.
Correct.
Are you coming in about what time? Coming out to the...
Oh, eight o'clock at night? From eight to six, that's how long it's a work.
You mentioned subcontractors. A technical question, Sandy, Sandy, we had asked Teleport to provide us with our insurance documents.
Yeah, of course I get them, have it.
Would we need that from the individual subcontractors as well that are going to be part of the...
I'm sure that Jeff would like us to have those, yes.
So we would need those certificates of insurance indemnifications for the borough from every subcontractor.
I sent you samples?
Yep, yeah, by, you know, waiting office, don't care. Once you get that shipped away to you on our end, I get to have with the other subcontractors. The technology.
So you're gonna have like rollers coming over the bridge and then down into the center intersection?
Correct. So I'm milling and paving up to the bridge, milling into Mount Airy Road.
You're milling into that, okay, so, all right, and you don't have problems, I guess, with the grade, with the stands?
No.
Okay. Doug, the, I mean, we have space in the library that's sort of not used much, and, you know, and Emerald Lot is sort of, you know, can have highs and lows, I don't know.
The back end of Emerald really isn't used that much, still on the front, yeah.
I mean, that's where the Mount Airy stuff was for that whole period of time, and I think you're, we probably would rather push parking if we needed it.
It's a mess at this point, no?
Yeah, you know, all, all the more reason not to, not to bang up the library.
Yeah, and the library's open a little bit later. I mean, you, you know, there's not much, there's a lot of people in and out, going out at that time of day, closing up and everything else. Probably want to stay away from the library.
Yeah, I think so.
Because some of the people that go to the, the restaurants and everything else utilize those areas also.
Yeah, no, that's, it's pretty close to the other center of the other, if we're coming down to the...
They're gonna have escort vehicles and stuff out of Emerald, they'll use an escort, you know, to get out and, you know, get on the road like they normally do.
The other thing is, we need to have, since the trails and the continue to be approved up Faraway Springs, we need to have a clear corridor for people to put a couple of cars in there and to get access to the trail that goes into the, the parking lot.
Were you talking about?
The one on down here? I'm sorry, the two oh two, there's a trailhead there, that's the, the start. Everybody should see them that a while back. We did the first marking and everything back in December, or, yeah, December.
I'm not familiar with the trail.
I can show you where it is, but there's, we need to have some space available there.
Where is it, at the Mount Airy Lot?
Yeah, that's where it starts.
No, no, Mount Airy, two oh two.
Sorry.
Yeah, it goes up the round top.
In the back. Well, I'm not so sure, just, you know, put some cones out, it won't block that area.
But you would only be doing that on weekends anyway, correct?
No, but you still have to have people that might want to go up the trail.
Oh, you're not still, you're not talking about walking on the trail.
It's a big lot, I think it's...
And it wouldn't be weekends necessarily, no. It is a large lot, but unfortunately, we've had a lot of things in there, and access has been completely blocked, and we really need to keep clear way for that.
And John's not here, but if they're gonna use it when they leave, they can just grade it down, make sure no water and ice and everything else goes over into the business and stuff, just make sure it's flattened out and just touched, upgraded, rolled.
I hope we don't have any ice.
Right across the street, where you're gonna be using it as a bar game?
It's gravel.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be chewing it up with the milling machine and everything else, so...
You're much too worried about the salt budget for these. No, I don't think we're gonna have it in, in May, I have it in our jail.
I'm just worried he leaves and there's a big rut, and the water will pour over to the offices over there.
Can we get, Doug, can you get some posts in at the beginning, if I show you where that's supposed to be?
Sure.
Sure, I'll have it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have some people working on signs and things like that.
Just flag it up, yeah.
Anyone else? Manny, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 6G. New Jersey Land Conservancy contract?
I just wanted to mention it's going to expire. I haven't heard them say anything about whether or not it should be renewed, I don't know.
There's a meeting tomorrow with Open Space, and they're helping complete the application, not the, well, the application is, would be the next step, but the Open Space Recreation Plan, so that that can get run back with the planning board and back with the rest, and we can all about that. So, we'll give them a last, yeah, this time.
Okay, so...
Can you ask them for a new contract proposal?
When is it out, by the way?
During this month, I think.
Okay.
Does that give you enough time? Should they be re-upped?
It's a good, next meeting is March.
I think they have to give us a proposal.
Yeah.
Next meeting is the 25th.
So, they can get a proposal to us by the next meeting?
Okay. Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, 6H Correspondence. We have notice regarding community well test program at Electronic Waste Day event sponsored by the Environmental Commission, Green Team, and Raritan Headwaters Association, which is scheduled for April 23rd, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Anyone have any comments on that?
Did you have a set?
Well, there are actually, there's a whole series of dates coming up, including the E-Waste Day. They are afraid this may be the last one for a couple of years, so everyone really clean out your old computers if you need it, because getting rid of e-waste is becoming a bigger and bigger problem. The well testing, it was very successful two years ago. Radon wells, there's all sorts of stuff, options. And actually, we'll have total color form and fecal confirmation. They've got a separate test for iron, manganese, lead, arsenic, volatile organics, pesticides, radon, and gross alpha. Not sure what that is. But I will actually post this downstairs with the prices for the services. Borough Hall, I believe, will be the drop-off point, so they will pick all the tests up.
Yeah, for the completed...
For the completed tests. You take them home, you run your water or whatever it is, take samples, and bring them back here.
They give you a kit down there, or there it is?
There are different kits, depending on what you want to do.
Okay.
And they come back to the Raritan watershed people who will be collecting them for two hours on a designated day.
But, you know, two years ago, I also just drove my, we didn't have a drop-off two years ago when they last did it. I just drove it out to, you know, Fairfield Farm or Fairview or whatever it is. So, but I would highly recommend people take advantage of this if you're on a well or even if, you know, you're in a borough and worried about, you know, lead pipes or whatever. So, it's an option. Also, this coming weekend, on the 16th, the Raritan, Raritan Annual River Cleanup. And I think they're, Christine, we're working right down here.
Claremont.
Claremont, the brook behind the station in that area. If you were interested, there's a phone number on this, I can post this. There are a couple of E-Waste Days, people, they're not in Burnsville, but they're open to people in the county. There's one in Bedminster on June 25th, if you're, there's one in Watchung on April 30th. It's all on our calendar. So, people have asked about it, you know, without going to the borough website to find out the dates. So, those are open to members, you know, other, anyone in the county. And let's see, what else? Oh, and on the 30th, there is the free tree distribution, which is going to be done in the community pool parking lot. This is, again, this is trees supplied by the state to help us replace trees lost in Hurricane Sandy.
Anyone else? Jan, thank you very much. Okay, we have another letter of correspondence. We have an invitation to join the Lakewana Coalition.
Which is a first. I mean, it sort of implied that it was renewal dues, but have we been a member of it in the past?
No, I have an accord. It's a $150 membership fee, but it basically says your dues are racially appreciated and primarily used for mailings and printing of information and material. These files of correspondence, I don't know how anybody feels about it.
And they're also suggesting that we may come up with a rider representative.
A person who rides, yeah, as a representative. Any comments?
We are certainly in, which should be a viable community belt, and you get a lot of locals and, you know, and a dead spot in the middle of the day, so maybe it's something that we should consider for $150.
Okay. Anyone else?
I agree.
You agree?